Good to have you, Father. Thank you for giving us this beautiful day. Lord, be with us as we gather tonight and make decisions that impact the citizens here in Rainsville. Be with us and ensure that our hearts are in the right place and that we're doing everything in the course of your will. It's in your name we pray.
Amen.
We have to stand and face the flag. Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll be talking, I'm gonna talk about Carlisle Road. A few weeks ago, Joey and I, along with Salania's Mayor Craig and Inger's Mayor Lacy, went to Montgomery and met with John Cooper, which is over the highway department of the state of Alabama. Anyway, we got some grant money and everything, I have met with the county, everything is to be run through the county on this particular project, which is Carlisle. They're gonna do Carlisle from Hilltop up through our, you know, city limits of Rainsville. And then Salania's gonna pick it up and go from there on to the Baptist Church. So, our part of that is $130,000. And the county is gonna, all this is gonna go through the county on the county bid, so our part will be the $130,000 and the county will get the money from the state and pay the other part. So, I'll be bringing that up, you know, for us to vote on. Because they're ready, they're, hopefully, I say Sam something about there, hopefully in the next few months, that project could go through and get done. Now, I talked to Sam a little bit about this too. Is, there's a couple of culverts and I think there's a water valve that needs to be raised just a little bit to make that road in a lot better shape. So, Sam was gonna go over some of that and look at it with Ricky Dawkins to make sure that we got our part of it done, so.
Did that hurt the last week?
Okay, so, did you check the water valve down there right at the, up at our hilltop? So, that needs to be raised just a little bit so we can get that level up there. But that, that's one thing. The other thing that I have, and it's really just to find out who can go and who can't go. Wade Shaddick with the, with the state of Alabama called, he's with the ATRIP program and he wants to know who can come to a meeting pertaining to Boosier Bridge and Shea Beach Bridge. And that meeting is scheduled for July 14th at nine o'clock in the morning. And so, I can go along with two more people if they wanna go. And they just wanna discuss the progress of the bridges, see where we're at, see what's going on. This is a part of the ATRIP program that we got our grants for the bridges out there. So, we just need to find out who can go off the council, mayor council, you know, who can go to that meeting, so. And that's one thing I'll need to be, we need to find out who can go on that, so. That's only to find out.
Where, where is this meeting located?
It's gonna be at Gunnar's.
At the, at the lawn in the state park or?
Oh, I don't have that address with me.
Okay.
So, everybody should've got an email on that or a file we sent behind.
I got one, I just filled a note what the actual location of Gunnar's was. July the 14th, what day, is, is that on the?
I guess it's on the 14th. First day. It's all right.
Do we need to go ahead and try to figure out who can attend that? Would we want this?
Yeah, we could do it now. It still wasn't council made because it's not something to vote on. It's just who can go and who can't go, so.
I initially wanted to go, but after the trial that week, so.
I believe I can attend that meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I can.
Three of us needs to go.
You and Mayor Joe?
Yeah, I'll be fine. I'll be good. All right, sounds like it.
We got two things too. And one of them is our yearly surprise that we budgeted for Christmas lights, one somewhere around $5,000. It's around $5,000. We budgeted that for a year for it, so I'm gonna make voting on it. We go ahead and do that. And then when they're building the new biking trail at the Field of Dreams, there's part of the fence that we're gonna have to move. And we got the estimate for that, it was somewhere up there in the building. That one that was on the high end.
Anything with high end, 12, 12, eight.
And so, it's gonna be somewhere up there through there. And that puts the, basically it's moving the fence to the, to the high school building. So, I'll be bringing that up. That's all I got.
I'm gonna be amending the motion that I made the last time to bid out the bathrooms. I goofed up and I did not check that before I walked in. I thought it was anything over 15 grand, but specifically with public work contracts over 50. So, I'll be making that amends to that. And in turn, accepting Jimmy Taylor's bid that he had that I handed out or handed around last week, last meeting. And the next thing is the Tom Bevill doors for 4,800 with Jimmy Taylor, those will be fixed. We've been having issues with those for a while, so those will be replaced. And we had a discrepancy in employee paycheck, so I will be making a motion to correct that pay. I'll be authorizing the clerk to get a city credit card with First Southern State Bank. And then, last time I had made a motion for the PD to get some printers and there were some initial costs involved, so I'll be making a motion to allow for those extra costs. And that's all I have.
First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate the seven and eight-year-old All-Stars for making the state tournament again back-to-back years. Last year, the city did a $750 sponsorship to help pay for the team and their travels and expenses that they're going to incur. We're gonna make a motion that we do the same this year and sponsor them to the tune of $750. We have two invoices from Lad Environmental. One is for $92,892.20. This is for the upgrades of the wastewater treatment plant. The other one is for $1,650. I'm gonna make a motion that we pay these invoices out of our special accounts fund with the caveat that it is to be immediately reimbursed by the reconstruction loan, which would go towards what the, go towards paying these invoices if it was in dollars. I'm gonna make a motion that, well, first of all, there are some election duties that are required of the mayor. And those are specified that only if the mayor is not running for reelection. Those are to be allocated if the mayor is running for reelection. I'm going to make a motion that we want Melissa Ledbetter and David Holt to uphold the duties of the mayor during the upcoming elections as neither one of those are running for office. I also am going to bring up a invoice we have from Swan Plumbing. Swan Plumbing had to go in and completely replumb the pump center at the Mission, at the Mission Center, the pumping station at the Mission Center. The cost of that was $2,852. I'm gonna ask that we reimburse Swan for the work that they did. Also, Olive Ranch Pumping Station is, is almost in the same predicament. Right now, only one pump is functional on that pumping station and it too is gonna have to be replumbed.
Excuse me, could I ask one quick question? What are the duties that Melissa and David want to take over at the election process specifically? I was just curious.
They're detailed in all the literature that we give from the league on what each individual has to do.
From the league of municipal, thank you.
Some positive news to report, very positive news. Our accountant, Ms. Betty Hoffman, had sent out an eight-month report for the city of Rainsville. In that eight-month report, there is a comparative, a comparative report to the prior eight months. And at this point in time, our revenues are set over $73,000 above and beyond what they were eight months into last year. And by all accounts, last year was one of the best financial years on record for the city of Rainsville. So, we are on track to have an even better year this year. Now, I would like to point out a few of the items that we have seen the biggest increase Our concessions at the, our park concessions are up 44 percent. Our park fees and charges are up over 13, almost $1,400. I do believe this right here is from the good work of Mr. Samuel Smith. He has gone out his way to schedule as many tournaments as possible. And that facility now is a nine-month facility instead of the three-month facility that it was when it was originally built. It's being used all year long and that right there has a huge impact on our local economy. Other items that are up, our lodging tax is up 57 percent over this time last year. Once again, I think credit goes to Mr. Samuel Smith and also to the Agribusiness Center. Those are the two facilities that really bring people in and they stay here more than one day. Now, our building permits are up over 300 percent, the revenue that we generated from those. And that's substantial. That right there is the, sounds as though that we are having somewhat of a building boom, that more people are starting new construction, more people are building items in the city of Rainsville. And that will have a long-term impact on our agglor, on the property tax that we receive, which by the way, our property tax was up 6.2 percent over this time over last year, which that 6.2 percent equals a little over $14,000. Now, with this increase that we have received in revenue, there is also a decrease that we have had in employee costs. Our employee costs are down 31, over $31,000 in the first eight months of this year than they were in the first eight months of last year. So, our revenue is up and our expenditures are down. We're eight months into this fiscal year and we've had reports for eight months into this fiscal year and things are looking very good. That's all I have right now.
Truck info, please?
I don't, I don't have it.
I'm sure Johnny even, truck info? What is the, what is the price? The, what's that?
Yeah, the, the one sitting out here, the silver one, was a 38.109. The white one that we brought up, the other one, 37.14020. So, I, I don't know, I can't remember which one of you guys looked at. There was a difference in suspension and other stuff with the white truck versus the silver truck. And that's how I can keep them separated. One of them had upgraded wheels, upgraded suspension.
All of our other vehicles are white in nature, correct? And that white one was 37?
14020.
And that is a state-vehicle price, correct? That is not a?
Yes, they have a state vehicle.
The, I wanna go back to the election duties we'll say. Is there any reason why the election duties couldn't be informed by the clerk?
I think there's certain things like presenting a, the voter list, the final voter list to the clerk. I mean, the clerk does the majority of it. I think there's just a couple, but I've not gotten those together.
So, so now, the answer?
Correct, there's only a couple of things that me and David will be doing. I don't know as in a couple, as in two, but there are a few things that we would have to do versus.
Well, I think the statute calls for like a disinterested person.
Right. Well, neither one of us is running.
Which are in office now.
Correct.
I just, I just felt like it was something that the clerk could do. You know, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know that there's a law, probably not a law that would be against it. But, you know, it could possibly have the appearance that it would be something I'm doing, like these duties that would be, that would not be impartial.
Well, I mean, we could double check, but by no means are me and David Holt impartial in whatsoever way. The main thing is making sure.
I was trying to make impartial. And do you accept there are places to invite candidates?
Right, correct. And as far as me and David doing it, I think the biggest job to do is making sure whoever is registered to vote and is on the voting list lives in Rainsville. I, I think that's the biggest job. And really, I think that's the only one, if not a couple of other things, but I hope that's enough.
So, is there something that the clerk could do?
We have to present a list to her, a final list. She's the one that checks certain things that, like I said, I've not done anything with this. I had a ton of other stuff, budget-wise, that I've been working on, so I've not done anything with elections. I just know S2 were the ones that, we're not running. So, if you don't mind to do it, if you have any issue with S2 doing it, then by no means we can.
Well, it doesn't have, it's not, I mean, it doesn't have anything just you two. It's just, I would prefer someone that's, that's not an elected person to, you know, do it. I think, I think the appearance is, you know, even though there may not be a law against it or a rule against it, I think the appearance is that, you know, there might or might not be impartial.
Well, Dan, do you not mind us to also set up the poll workers, because we've also been doing that?
Well, poll workers haven't been approved by any kind of body. There's no way around, there's no way around that unless you're gonna delegate that to the clerk if you will. I, you know, I just wanted to raise, I just wanted to raise the question because, you know, I just think it's preferable, but I think it's preferable that the clerk handle that. It's sort of, you know, it's sort of like, there's no rule or law against it, but it's the appearance that we're going to lengths to try to hold. And, you know, I think over this term, you know, the council is going to be great lengths to avoid the appearance of conflict of interest.
That is true. I, I mean, I have no problem with less than me, so I have no problem us looking into it and trying to figure out the best metrics for that. I think the clerk does the majority of it. The one thing that stuck out was presenting a final voter list of who's allowed to and who's not too. There are several that have come up to my husband and specifically that do not live in the city limits that voted last election. That will not happen this election. And we will make sure whoever is over it will make sure of that.
You know, also, since, since we were talking about the election, also, you know, we're gonna have to appoint a, you know, election manager, because I can't do that, because I will be running. So, you know, I'm assuming that's gonna be the clerk, but we need to do that.
So, that's something, what did I say, you bring it?
Well, you know, it's, it's gonna have to be voted on, it's, it's gonna have to be approved, because, you know, like, like you said, I, it's not something I can do. Also, just one announcement, one announcement. Next Monday, you know, we've, we've got an ongoing comp plan that we're developing. We've gotta have a fellow participation come on, so that will be, we have, that would have needed to go ahead and, and do that, get it out of the way. I know, you know, Lucas had come, we talked about that, everybody was busy, but we need to go ahead and get that out of the way. Right, you know, I don't know if there'll be many people there or not, but we need to do that next Monday. So, that's the plan. I believe you all are okay with first thing?
Yeah. I know next Monday I'll be out.
Yeah, okay. We just need to get that out of the way, so we can first say. Sarah's summer worker has quit and anyway, she came up with another worker to fill that role there. So, tell them to go ahead and get started on that. Decision approved, but you don't want to formally approve that to get that to my department.
And one thing, qualify has started today, so. There's six names that's on the wall so far, it's up to see how. Nope, yours is not up there yet. So, I guess it's two weeks from that?
Yes. Are we gonna go, are we gonna appoint an election manager or something? And then do that to, just for clarification, you know?
I'm just reading some of the election stuff and it does say that we can, it says a disinterested party and if we're satisfied with the clerk doing it, we can do it. So, we're just, I'll make Kelly to do everything.
You can do it, Kelly.
We believe in you.
Thank you, Senator Dana. My pleasure, Senator. I didn't say anything compassionate, but.
Tilly Football Silence are going on, they will end Thursday night. If anybody's taken notice for information, they can call Sammy at 256-717-3401. We're also having a little fall ball, which is really July ball. We play a few weeks in July. If anybody has a team they wanna do anything, they can contact me also. That's the place, Fall, 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 July Fall Ball.
When is the first game of the fall ball season?
Fall.
We just got that center ball. There's nothing wrong with that. We got that summer and it just continues over and then we hope in the wintertime to go up. We played Tuscaloosa two weeks ago and it was 102 degrees and you sit out there and feel the spilling. We're wearing our practices for the fall ball.
I had somebody comment over there, he said they were about to hop out there and watch seven o'clock.
I'd like for us to have that same time scheduled too.
I would like to commend the city for the way the roadside looks. I think the ones you hired are doing a good job.
He's probably gonna hate it after today, though I think today's the first time it rained since we hired him, so.
Yeah.
It's a good practice.
But it does look good.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Meeting has come to order. Graham?
Present.
Ledbetter?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
You all looked over the minutes from the past meeting?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented and dispense with the reading thereof.
Okay.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all the favors said aye.
Aye.
And those, motion carries. Impose, motion carries.
Hey, I make a motion that we pay the $2,852 owed to Swan Plumbing for the replumbing of the Mission Center pumping station.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, motion carries.
I make a motion that we pay the $2,852 owed to Swan Plumbing for the replumbing of the Mission Center pumping station.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, motion carries.
I make a motion that we sponsor the seven and eight-year-old All-Star team for the amount of $750.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, motion carries.
I make a motion that we pay the two invoices from Land Environmental, which tallies the amount of $94,540.20 out of the Special Accounts Fund under the caveat that it is to be reimbursed with the construction loan proceeds when they come in.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, motion carries.
I make a motion that we appoint Kelly Frazier to uphold the election duties of the mayor.
I think so. Sorry.
Well, I mean, I waited, no one's saying anything, so I'm ready to go.
I would like to add, the need clarification, that's just a bit of election manager. So we get in the minutes.
Okay. I will amend my motion to, we appoint Kelly Frazier to be the election manager and uphold the election duties of the mayor.
I think so.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, motion carries.
That's all that I have?
Okay, I make a motion to amend my prior motion of bidding out the bathrooms at the Tom Bevel Center in the last June meeting, hers, quote of Alabama Section 39-2-1. I was done. That was pretty much it.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, motion carries.
I make a motion to accept the bid of Jimmy Trailer Construction for the Tom Bevel bathrooms in the total amount of $33,250.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Lingerfeld, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, motion carries.
I make a motion to accept the quote of $4,800 to replace the front doors and replace them with new ones.
Second that motion.
Did I say Jimmy Trailer or not? No. I apologize, Jimmy Trailer.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Graham, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, motion carries.
I make a motion that both of these expenditures be spent out of the capital improvement fund.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, motion carries.
I make a motion that a check, mine is employee taxes and benefits of $2,330.29 be issued out to Mary Barrenton.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Lingerfeld, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, motion carries.
Make a motion to authorize the city clerk to get a credit card with her Southern statement.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Lingerfeld, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, motion carries.
I make a motion to allow Chief Stewart to spend an additional $1,000 for printers for the district department.
Second that.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Graham, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, motion carries.
That's all I have.
I'll make a motion that we purchase our yearly allotment of Christmas lights that are totaled about $5,000.
Motion by Freeman, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, motion carries.
Then we'll make a motion that we hire, have events moved and build the greens for the new biking trail that's made of milk, could be 1,200, could be anything.
Sure. Second. Motion by Freeman, second by Lingerfeld, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, motion carries.
That's all I have. Quick, on that bike and trail, any updates on timeframe for completion?
They're working pretty decently, and you can go up there now, they've done some bridges and everything else, that's one part of it, so.
They're working pretty hard, isn't it?
It's a one-man show, pretty much.
Yeah. Most of it is said, if you could see, we're going to see you in Colorado for about two hours on Saturday, which is when you would make some progress.
Wait, I think we need to be named Chris Johnson.
I'd like to make a motion to repay Carlyle Road along with, working with the county to oversee this project.
Second that motion.
Oh, $130,000 for our farm. That's closer miles, they said about 500. Yeah, we thought it was going to be about 150, it was actually down 100.
I'll second that.
Please, you have a second. Motion by Lingerfeld, second by Graham, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, motion carries.
I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
Motion to pay the bills, second by Graham, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Your summer worker.
Yeah, I've got a summer employee at the different employees at the library.
I'll make a motion that we hire her as an employee.
And what place do you?
Starting, well, to be part-time, and I'm not sure what that place deal is.
Or Tom Bottom.
Yeah, start time.
I second that.
Motion by Lingerfeld, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, motion carries.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Ledbetter, second by Lingerfeld, all in favor, say aye.